Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite?
Here. We have a quorum. First item on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Go move.
Second.
Motion a second. Is there any discussion, actions or corrections? Saying none, all those in favor, please sign a pop and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? I'll let people know to be reading off the amended agenda this evening. I think those are the ones at the back of the room and all council members have the amended agenda tonight.
Sure.
Next, we'll go to petitions and communications. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, you'll fill out one of these white cards at the back of the room, bring it up to myself or the clerk, and you'll have a chance to do so. First, we have, is it Christine or Christina Nelson? Was it 2008 Grange? Twenty? Twenty-one oh eight, Grange, yes. If you'll come up to the microphone, please.
If someone could just advantage to be speaking first because I won't get to address any of the issues that come toward the end. But you've heard my spiel several times already, beginning with when the tickets were voided for the two neighbors who have cats, total of at least six, which have been in my yard. So this evening, rather than go through my same old spiel, I'd like to address some of the issues that I understand came up during the week. First of all, it appears that there is concern that the new animal, if the amended animal control ordinance is passed, that some neighbors could harass other neighbors using the new animal control ordinance for that purpose. And I think that's highly unlikely, especially the way they have reworded the animal control ordinance to say that only a police officer or the animal control officer can give the warning. But since that has been laid on the table, I'd also like to say that right now, one neighbor can in fact use his animals to harass a neighbor. So the people who are being, who are using their animals to harass neighbors are in fact going completely unchecked. When my two neighbors had their tickets voided last summer, one has very kindly kept her cats out of my yard now. She was the one who made the issue over the ordinance. The other one, the man across the street, has not. And when his ticket was voided, it was sort of a get out of jail free card. He has been defiant in his refusal to keep his cats at home, and since he owns four cats, four of the six cats, that's a problem. So that gate swings two ways. You don't simply, I can't imagine that anybody would use the ordinance, as it's worded now, to quote harass a neighbor, because unless the cat's in your yard, why would you even think of it? Why would it even cross your mind? And as it stands now, the people who are using their animals to harass their neighbors are getting a get out of jail free card. Then I understand that there is some concern about excessive defecation on a favored plant and whether this does, whether the harassment using this ordinance would cause any quote real damage. First of all, it's not excessive defecation on a favored plant, it's defecation period because cat feces do in fact carry disease, and I have a little handout for all of you on toxoplasmosis. It's something that is common in cat feces. I'll let you read it. And it's particularly dangerous when, if a pregnant woman catches it or someone has it and then becomes pregnant. I'll let you read all of this, and I won't spend my five minutes going over that. But then the question about using it to harass another one, no quote real damage has been done. This seems to imply that there is damage, but the damage isn't real or unimportant. So the definition of real damage is something that I sort of wondered about. I mean, is it the city's purview to actually define what constitutes real damage or important damage versus unimportant damage? Then there's a question about cats fleeing when approached. Yes, that's true, but they come back. I mean, that's the whole issue. When you've got six cats in your yard, the, and I work at home, so I'm around home virtually all the time, and my, the window to my office faces the outside. So I see when these cats come around. And I have a book manuscript due in four months, and it breaks my concentration to have to run out there and chase these cats. And if I don't, they'll just take up residence in my yard. The idea of spraying them with water, been there, done that, doesn't work. A neighbor of mine who has now moved suggested that in the summer of 2001, and she and I spent the entire summer trying to spray the cats. And it only works, I've seen it work once in thirty years. My mother actually cornered one. But you have to corner the cat up a tree or in a place where it absolutely cannot move, and you have to soak it to the skin until it's dripping to keep it from coming back. When you go out with either a hose, which is, which doesn't work, because you have to drag the hose out and then, okay kitty, stand still while I spray you. That's just, that's not workable. And we tried water pistols because we thought that was quicker, and that didn't work either. As soon as they hear the door cracking, they walk out. And they take off.
Your time's nearly up.
Okay, and that's basically all I have to say because, as I said, you've heard my spiel before, and I hope that you pass this because it would give some modicum of protection to the people who are being victimized by their neighbors.
Any questions for Ms. Nelson tonight? Thank you. Next is Ann Berger, 506 West Washington. Ann? Okay, you don't wish to speak but are in favor of the ordinance. Next is Judy Gamble, 2107 Grange Drive. Judy?
I did have an opportunity to speak with you last week, and just as a refresher, what I was conveying last week was my own particular situation, which is that my front yard has become a cat latrine act. I think clearly we took the wrong approach. We tried the scare them off approach, and they're more than we are. So that doesn't work. They're also there doing what they do when we're eating lunch or other times when it is particularly objectionable. So I would like to note that, you know, we've come a long way. I have a book that I love very much called The Good Old Days, They Were Terrible, and it in fact cites Urbana, Illinois, in the section on pigs running loose in the street. And it says, "The squares and parks amounted to public hog pens, and Urbana, Illinois boasted more hogs in the city than people." I just came to mind because there was some conversation about cats do what cats do. Well, you know, hogs do what hogs do too. And we've made it this far. We don't have hogs. We've kind of got the dogs under control, and I would really appreciate some help with the cats. Had I been smarter, I would have approached it with a here kitty 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 with a piece of mackerel and invited the cat to another home, but I wasn't smart enough to do that. I would like to call your attention to the public health problem of cats running wild and what other organizations and communities are doing about it. The Humane Society has, the National Humane Society has a Safe Cats Program, and their campaign is to have all cats indoors so that they do not be injured or catch illnesses. I ran over somebody's pet cat on Race Street. I'm really sorry about that, and I didn't feel very good about it. The cat wasn't injured enough that I could catch it, but I imagine when Muffy got home, somebody said, "Some bad person did something to you, Muffy." And I will say that I didn't feel very good all day about having run over somebody's cat, but it came across the street and there I was. I would suggest that we pay close attention to the toxoplasmosis problem. There's a number of things from the National Institutes of Health and other government sources that remind us that it's a serious problem, as are parasites and foodborne illnesses carried by cats. Let me turn pages quickly here. Medline Plus talks extensively about congenital toxoplasmosis, very serious disease with very terrible consequences for newborns. And the particular problem with toxoplasmosis is that it's a very long infectious period, up to more than twelve months, not only of the deposits themselves, but all the soil that is touched. So I would ask you to have some concern about the public health issues that are involved with that. The US EPA also comes out in terms of contamination of groundwater and drinking water or uncontrolled excrement, and it goes on and on. USDA, there are just many, many concerns about it, and I would ask you to please mess well so that we do not turn up in a book like this a hundred years from now. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Gamble? Pretty much. Any other petitions and communications from members of the public? Members? Oh, ma'am, if you want to bring that up.
I am also speaking on the cat ordinance, and the first that I knew of it was last week when it hit the newspapers. And it has been a problem, I just wanted to make you aware that it has been a problem in our neighborhood as well. I don't own cats, I like cats, I am a bird watcher. There are four different cats that regularly come to my yard, and one has pretty much taken a permanent rep in the territory. And I guess my concern is that, one, any piece of property that another resident would put in my yard would not be allowed in my yard, yet a cat is allowed in my yard, and I can't chase the cat away during the day because I'm not there. The other thing is, is that my enjoyment and my hobby is being curtailed because I find if I feed the birds or water the birds, here come the cats to kill them. So I'm setting up this environment for the cats to actually come into my yard because there are birds there, but then also are killing the very thing that I'm trying to protect and encourage. And then in looking at research that's been done and information that's out, cats are a major predator on not only birds, songbirds, but also other small mammals. Urbana prides itself in being a tree city, which encourages birds to come into the city, and I think we owe it to that, you know, to that part of nature, the wildlife, to make it an environment where they are also somewhat protected if we're going to create a habitat which encourages them to come here. The other thing is, is that there are a lot of misconceptions about, you know, putting a bell on a cat does not scare them away from the bird. The birds do not scare away from that. They're not acclimated to running away when they hear, or flying away when they hear a bell. A cat can catch a bird and be released, and the bird will be fine. Research has shown that only twenty percent of birds that have been caught and released and treated for any infection survive. So it's, every publication that has come to our house related to the Audubon Society or the National Wildlife Society or even the Humane Society have talked about what a problem this is for the wildlife. So I guess I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a homeowner, but also as someone who's interested in wildlife. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Next is Kathy Eastman, 1311 North Berkeley in Urbana.
I want to say that I also just learned about this issue from reading the paper from last week, and not having heard much of the justification on both sides, I'm still a little bit concerned and puzzled about the issue itself. I am a cat owner, all of my cats are indoor cats, but I do know some people who are all hated cat owners that would do anything they could for their cat that have tried keeping their specific cat indoors and not been able to because of that particular cat's requirement for being outside. I certainly, as an individual, do not recommend that people let their cats out. I, my five cats are very happy being indoor cats, but I'm concerned about those few cats who really do need to be outside. I'm concerned about, has anyone checked with the Humane Society or others to see whether or not an ordinance of this type would increase the number of cats that are abandoned or relinquished that are, were already suffering from an overabundance of cats at the Humane Society? I think that is my concern at this point, is whether there's been any information or dialogue on whether an ordinance of this type would create, and I'm trying to find, homes for the cats that we already have that are abandoned or left in the community. I would be concerned about an issue making the issue worse for them in that situation. And I appreciate any additional feedback that you have on this issue. Thank you.
All right. Any other petitions or communications from members of the public? Council members? Okay, we'll go on then directly to these, since there's no other business. Mr. Otto?
Ordinance number 2003-12-141, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the use of right-of-way fish and alley for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any quest, or any discussion? No discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven ayes, Mr. Otto?
Ordinance number 2003-12-142, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement clarifying ownership of parking deck walkway adjacent to 115 West Main Street for the committee, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
I abstain due to a conflict of interest.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes and one abstention due to a conflict. Mr. Otto?
Ordinance number 2003-12-143, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a permanent license agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for the installation of various utilities along Gregory Street, Oregon Street, Nevada Street for the-
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven ayes, Mr. Otto?
Ordinance number 2003-12-144, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a license agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning meter parking on Clark Street for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion a second, is there any discussion on this? And will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, Mr. Waylon?
Just like to take this opportunity to say that I hope that this may, in some small way, establish a pattern of co-development of the city and interaction, equal interaction with the University of Illinois, so that, for example, when the property, that they compensate the city for that property. It's kind of a quid pro quo, and I think it's only, this seems like a step in the right direction if we can assume legally that it might be considered that way.
Ms. Baye?
Thank you. Just for our listening audience, I want to clarify that we, this particular matter involves meters, and in the past, there have been, we've had agreements before where we've switched them, but we are, we are not yet receiving, I mean, just so people know, we are not yet receiving payment from, for properties they take off the tax rolls.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Waylon.
Thank you, Ms. Pat, for that clarification. And as a matter of fact, the city owns, the university owns $1.2 billion worth of property in the county, and they contribute $55,000 a year. And not in lieu of taxes, because they don't want to be saddled with that distinction, but in, for some services that they receive. And this is kind of a cooperative effort that we need to make, and I don't want to punish the university by any means, which is so near and dear to all our hearts, but the state should realize its obligation to the city. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven ayes, Mr. Otto?
Ordinance number 3-12-145, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment, an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Champaign concerning the funding for construction of Lyman Avenue for the committee, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, on an agreement for improvement of Lyman Avenue. Any discussion? Ms. Chenoweth?
I just want to underline some of the discussion brought up by Mr. Otto last week, and in thinking about some of his comments and talking to people in the community, I really, it's very difficult, such a fairly significant expense of a property, of a street that otherwise I'm not sure exactly what we would be upgrading it for, for county properties that really don't add to our tax rolls, so don't really help to pay for the street upgrade that we're looking at. And so I just would urge our staff, I think, as we move forward and look at times when governmental bodies, other taxing districts are requiring certain upgrades, that if there's any way in which we can look at some revenue sharing for those times, especially when it's really kind of, it's not Lyman Avenue, but all of the uses out there are county-related, and it's just very difficult for council members to swallow an expense, and for the sacred banner to swallow an expense for something that's so clearly used for specific use, that's a county use, it's not a taxable use, and it's difficult for us to really bear the cost of that kind of development, or other kinds of developments. We tend to have neighborhood schools, we tend to have neighborhood facilities, and so there's multiple uses for those streets. In this case, it's really difficult to claim that, maybe in ten or fifteen years when we have more residential development to the east, it would be easier to claim that Lyman Avenue really, upgrading it to this level really benefits all the taxpaying citizens and businesses of the, of our community and of that area. So I am going to vote for this, but I have a lot of reservations about voting for something like this where we are really forking, forking out the bill for something that has such a county-intensive use. And I'd like to see more intergovernmental agreements in the future in terms of revenue, or cost sharing for this.
Yeah, Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I guess I take a little bit of a different stance on this, on this issue than Ms. Chenoweth, and just wanted to point out some of the reasons why I'm supporting this. Lyman Avenue, I think, is one of the streets that's, even though it's bordered, well, it's bordered by Solocup, which is in city limits, and then the, obviously, the county building on the other side, that it's, that it has a lot of uses that Urbana residents, Urbana businesses, that they use. It's also the connection for when people want to go use part of the Urbana Park District's facilities, whether it's soccer, the children's soccer or adult soccer throughout the summer and in spring and fall, or indoor basketball at Brookins, that's part of the Park District. And I realize the Park District is larger than the city and a different taxing unit, but a district, but a lot of city residents use that street, and I think at least have talked to me and mentioned to me in passing that they'd like to see that street improved. It's also a connection between two major streets that, of course, of Maine and Washington, and I think it's important to have that, obviously, because that's where a lot of their, the upgrades are being done and have been done. But I think that this is, this is a good cooperative move between the city and the county for city residents to be able to use and get to other city functions, Park District functions and county uses more efficiently and, I think, safely as well, in an improved surface that is not only better for cars, but also for other modes of transportation, bicycles and walking and that, and that sort. So I support this, and I think it's good how the staff has been able to work with the county adjustment in payment schedules so that, so that it helps with the way that our revenue flow goes as well. Thank you.
For further discussion? Yes, Mr. Waylon?
I think that I would rather agree with Ms. Chenoweth's approach to this, although the points that Ms. Wyman makes are certainly valid, in that it does benefit citizens on Main Street and getting to the Park District and all. But it is, on one side, Solocup, on the other side, largely used by the J.L. and by the Brookins Building and other county functions, and since it is so heavily used by the county, I think, rather than a 66-33 split. And I'm going to vote for two, because it is an improvement that we will benefit from. But I think that in the future, I would rather see a little more forthcoming from the county itself.
Mr. Otto?
I won't reiterate the points that the other people have made, but I certainly share them, and, you know, I would, presented by this with a blank slate, I would probably vote against this. However, we made this commitment, and so I think it's important that the city follow through on the commitments that it makes, so I'll go ahead for it. But, I mean, it is, it's true that Lyman Avenue is used by more than just the county, but in its current state, it is adequate to serve those uses, and the expansion that we're considering is one that is motivated by the uses, the more intensive uses that the county needs and requires upgrades for the street.
Any discussion? There's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven ayes, Mr. Otto?
Resolution number 2003-12-025R, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certification of consistency for the Housing Authority of Champaign County, 2004 Annual Agency Plan for the committee, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We do have some additional information that's been given to us based on some questions that the council had last week, and Matt Hogan is here, and this is a memo from him. Bob, are you going to go over these, or?
I just wanted to quickly, just at the last meeting, we talked about, there was interest in understanding the increased utilization of the Section 8 vouchers, and Matt Hogan, who's with us tonight, the Housing Authority, provided us this information about the 139 additional vouchers. 129 of those were successfully leased, and then basically through their efforts that they mentioned in their last plan about outreach to landlords, they have another 52 vouchers that were sort of outstanding, but now utilized. And that got us to the additional 181. And then the Housing Authority also, this evening, provided us just with a, sort of a commitment letter, if you will, that- commitment letter, if you will, that pretty much all of the additions and changes and so forth that we referenced in our staff memo at the committee meeting. And just sort of, for the record, says they're going to make those changes in their final version of the plan.
Any questions from council?
I just want, is the final version of the plan delivered to community development when it's submitted to housing development?
Yes, that's been the case.
I just have a question about the motion that's on the table. Does it include the amendments to the certification of consistency that were listed in staff's memo from last week? Is this clear to me? It does include this? Okay.
Section for our comments, and our comments will be inserted there.
Okay.
Other discussion? If there's no further discussion, will the court please call the roll? Actually, we can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor, please say if I've been saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Otto?
Ordinance number 2003 dash 12 dash 146, ordinance amending the animal control ordinance, cats running at large, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I voted for this last week when we sent this from committee to council. Since then, obviously, we've had the additional information provided on disease and that sort of thing, diseases that are spread by cats. These are issues that I had no idea about. I figured that cats and the feces they leave in people's yards are a nuisance, but I wasn't really aware of the -- I appreciate the folks in the audience who brought this information to our attention and certainly strongly support my -- reiterate my support and, I guess, my concern about the health risks that are involved and covered in this issue. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Chenoweth?
Well, the ordinance has written, I have some concerns about which I voiced to council members. And I do agree that property owners should have control over their property, and they should be able to determine if someone else's property is causing trouble on their property. There should be some recognition of that. And I think that the ordinance, as written, does create a situation where people really have to make a statement and warn. On the other hand, in looking at this as a national issue, this has kind of gone back and forth on the state level. I think it was passed and then vetoed. I think other cities have looked at this issue as well, and I really think that at some point, you have to draw the line as to what is a government issue and what is not a government issue. And I believe from looking at the situation that there are other methods of control, that there's a -- that in many ways, you know, cats and dogs are not equivalent bodies, although I was aware of some of the health hazards of cats, and I think that primarily has to do with feces, et cetera. So I think it's a difficult call on this particular issue, but I don't really feel as though this ordinance is in the purview of government. I think that there are which individuals can take care of this problem.
Any further discussion, Ms. Pat?
First, I have a question. On our desk was something that says Section 7 dash 31. Is that Champaign city code?
This is Champaign. This is Champaign. I mentioned last week at the committee meeting that Champaign has a similar sort of setup, and so I provided the language here. I didn't do that last time. The pertinent language in there is, in the first paragraph, if you read through all the other, right in the middle of the second sentence, "Any animal," and then go on further down, "shall be considered a nuisance and may be impounded under the following circumstances." And then at paragraph B, it says that that includes "any animal which is able to come into contact with adjacent private properties because of inadequate leashing or design of enclosures." I guess the key there is that it's any animal, not just dogs or ghosts or pigs or whatever. It does include cats, and it has been enforced that way for some years in Champaign without any apparent major difficulties. I thought it'd be useful for the council to know.
What provision? I don't like overregulation either, and I certainly don't want to pass any laws that aren't needed, but I think that one of the speakers this evening made a very good point, and that's that if any other piece of property belonging to another person were placed in her yard, that would not be allowed. Why is a cat allowed? And I think that's really the point. For folks who are concerned, the ordinance before us does not prohibit cat owners from letting their cats run around outside. This is not requiring cat owners to keep their cats in the house. This ordinance would only come into play if a cat is a nuisance and the owner has been notified that their animal is a nuisance to a particular property. At that point, the property owner would be responsible for keeping their cat out of the yard of the person who's complaining. I don't think anyone has any inalienable right to use other people's property for their own personal use, including the use of their house pets. And since we know there's been a problem, I think this is a good ordinance. I support it. If we find that in the future it has been used in some inappropriate way to harass someone who is not creating a nuisance, then we can take it up again. But I suspect this is something that we're hardly ever going to hear about, and that will hardly ever come into play, except in those few circumstances where pet owners are not being responsible. And in those cases, then we've got a law on the books to protect the victim of that irresponsibility.
Yes, Mr. Wyland?
Steve, in your ordinance, you have written that the party who is offended can approach the neighbor, and that can act as a first complaint? Is that right?
Yes, the way it's set up is that the person who feels they don't want the cats in their yard can give that notice directly to the owner of the cats, or they can have an animal control officer or a police officer do it. And I understand, too, there's nothing in this that prevents people from resolving matters at a lower level than that, like neighbors very often do. And like one of the speakers tonight said, she talked to her neighbor, and her neighbor was decent about it and sensible, and took the steps necessary to keep her cats out of her yard. Just good resolution of neighbor-to-neighbor complaints is always, in my own view, the best approach to this kind of thing.
Sure.
But in cases where it doesn't work, it seemed like it wasn't a bad idea to provide some other mechanism, and so that's what you have here.
Thank you. Then on the second offense, what happens? After, say, the party, the neighbor goes up to the neighbor and says, "Look, your cat is coming over my property and defecating and digging up my plants and chasing birds, and I wish you'd keep your cat under control." What does that -- then the cat does it again.
At that point, then the owner can choose a variety of options, one of which is to do nothing, I mean, the owner of the property, choose a variety of options, one of those being to not do anything, another being to call an animal control officer and make a report. The animal control officer can make a determination to the best of her ability whether or not that report is credible and write up a report and basically a ticket on an ordinance violation case to the owner of the cat.
Issue a ticket?
Yes.
So if the second complaint is filed, the animal control officer does have the option of issuing a ticket?
Yes, it's a notice to appear on an ordinance violation case.
Notice to appear where?
In court.
In court. And that would, you would be there to oversee the city's interest?
Yes, as is typical with any other animal case, dogs, goats. We've had chickens running at large, we've had all kinds of goofy things.
Chickens running at large?
Even had chickens. Even, I don't know, Ms. Angelo, a goat at one point a few years ago.
Oh, I'll be darned.
Don't allow chickens.
This gets sillier and sillier.
Sure, sure. The funny thing is, I guess, is that there's a remedy for the goats and the chickens, but not for the cats, and to some people, that's not that funny.
Well, for sure.
I don't have a particular view one way or the other, I suppose, on this. I was asked to draft some language that seemed like it would strike a good balance, and I made an effort to do that.
I see. So you're not, you didn't write this to espouse it? You wrote it to answer the request from a council member?
From a council member, as well as from citizens, as well as from the animal control officer, who's been asking me for a few years if there wasn't something that we could do. And I tend to agree with her that we need to do something, whether it's this particular approach or something else, I don't know, but it seems like, it seems like basically somebody out there has a house that they, in Urbana, you know, you can spend 75, 150, a couple hundred thousand dollars on a house, and because of a neighbor, you can have your use of it severely hindered because of your neighbor's cats without any recourse. That seems kind of a difficult situation.
You know, first of all, I, personally, I can sympathize with the complaint. I see it as a nuisance directly, definitely, and it can be a nuisance. However, I think if we're going to address that in some way, we should do it in a way that's really practical and that can be assured. I think one of the flaws in this ordinance that I see to begin with is that a person is considered guilty until proven innocent. And that's the basis, that's, you know, all law is, I think, that might allow that would be flawed. And the reason I say that is that the person can file a complaint, then the animal control officer goes out and talks to the party perhaps, or in any case can file, can issue a fine or a notice to appear, at which time that person then can be fined. Perhaps the person is not until proved actually innocent, but they have to appear in court, and it has the semblance of being guilty. They have, they're motivated, and they're told they have to do something within the legal bounds of our judicial system. So that troubles me. Second thing that troubles me is that the neighbor has to act as an agent of the city or is allowed to act as agent of the city. I think that that's a flaw. I think where a neighbor can go to a neighbor and say, "I've got a problem with your cat or your animal or whatever, your dog," and they can get together, that's fine. And I've seen that happen in many cases, and in many cases, I, a number of cases anyway, I have been a party to that, when somebody's dog is getting out and doing things that, even threatening people. I've been able to go to an owner and get that owner to control that dog. And that, and I'm only acting as an intermediary, of course, I'm not, I don't have police powers, but all of us have that capability of acting as an intermediary. In any case, so I find the initial assumption of this or presumption of apparent guilt to be a flaw, and it may not be substantial in that it's, the person's not really found guilty until they go to court, and then there's, what happens they get to court? You've got to have evidence. Now, you know, the last time we were here, I was kidding around when I said we're going to have cat lineups. Well, you know, you've got, how can you tell one gray cat from another gray cat? Suppose there's two or three gray cats going through the yard? And so, I mean, I don't propose having lineups really, but some way of identifying the animal. So the animal control officer has to provide evidence. We've got our city council going to court to stand up for the city's regulatory powers. We have the animal control office with evidence supposedly. I mean, you've got to have evidence to say, "This is the cat." The lady who complained had videotapes, which would be very helpful, but most people can't, won't be able to do that. Most people are home during the day, and they don't work in their homes. So that is a kind of a circumstance that applies in very few cases, I would think. The other, you know, defecation and digging up plants and chasing birds. Squirrels are most notorious for that. Squirrels come into my yard, and they chase birds. They've eaten through a bird feeder and destroyed it. They've, they do that. Squirt reedles do that. And so do possums. I mean, at nighttime, they come along and they defecate all over the place. And then raccoons. I mean, these are nighttime animals. And it's very hard to say, okay, was it the cat that did the defecation, or was it some other animal? Unless you have a video, and you can go out and nail down the picture of the defecation. But in any case, most people can't do that. So it becomes unwieldy. And what we're doing then is, when somebody comes to us with a complaint and a concern, we're trying to deal with that concern in a way that assuages their concern as best we can. But this, I don't think, is the way to take care of that. I think, first of all, what, if anything should happen, the neighbor should complain to the animal control officer, and the animal control officer should go out and deal with the whole problem. But then look at, we've got the animal control officer running around chasing cats, et cetera, and maybe, you know, when he could be, or she could be chasing dangerous animals. And there are some around, rabid dogs and rabid squirrels are trying. And so I don't, I see this as complicating other than resolving it. And I think, I was told that we were, this has been on the books since last December. I think the lady, one of the complainants, told me that. And I have, that's what the lady said, I think. Isn't that what you said to me? No? But for some time, it's been being looked at, right?
Well, the tickets were voided. When I complained about my two neighbors, the neighbor got them voided the middle of the summer, maybe?
Okay, middle of the summer. But at some time. And this is the first I've heard of it. I mean, at first I've heard of the workings of our city attorney, who is very conscientious and very thorough. But I don't think that we have found the answer here. And I would be willing to continue this in the committee so that we could arrive at something much more practicable and that would make sense in dealing with the issue. You know, you read, I'm sure you all read about Governor Stevenson, who vetoed the bill in the state legislature some years ago that said, and his comment that cats are, it's their inherent nature to roam. And it is. It's a peculiarity of the animal. So I don't think, I don't think we've controlled the roaming animal. We have two parties here. We have the offended person and the offender. Maybe the offended person can do something better to protect themselves. I don't know what, but perhaps builds a fence or something like that. But in any case, the, and that was not satisfactory, I'm sure. Why should the person go through expenses and stuff like that when the person who's the, yeah, but we have a very few people who are really concerned or making an issue of this. And so we try to take care of those issues conscientiously, thoroughly, and logically to propose an ordinance, legislation, that will be on the books for a long time, affecting a lot of people, costing the city money with the animal control officer and our city attorney. With all of that in mind, just to pass a law is not satisfactory. It's poor legislation. I hope that, I would like to move that we put this on our next committee meeting so that we can have a chance maybe to discuss some of these differences with our city attorney.
We have a motion to send this to committee in January. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes, I would just say, I discussed this with the animal control officer, too. I'm not surprised I didn't get a second. I mean, what the heck? I'm used to that. I mean, it's like finding a hundred dollar bill on the street. But I talked with the animal control officer about this, and she gave me some good advice, only to have the animal control officer deal with it, not the neighbor's. only to have the animal control officer deal with it, not the neighbors. Neighbors shouldn't act as agents of the city. But you guys do what you want to do. I know, you know, I'm a Republican, what the hell, who cares what I say? But I do hope that you take this into consideration. I hope that someone here has the common sense to say, "Maybe we should postpone this for another meeting, so we can talk to our city attorney and to our animal control officer a little more." Thank you.
Mr. Otto?
Yeah. I just, I'm disappointed that Mr. Whalen is seeing this as some kind of a partisan issue. I think the reason his motion didn't get a second was because his logic was so confused. On the one hand, he seems to feel that there's some kind of a presumption that somebody is guilty until proven innocent in the ordinance, and there's just, there's no basis for accepting that. Anytime anybody's accused of violating a city ordinance, they have the right to go into court and to dispute that, or they can admit that, not go into court. But it's no different than any other ordinance where you're trying to get people to think of their neighbors and be considered and comply with the law. Mr. Whalen, you know, raises the issue of, "Well, maybe there are squirrels or possums or raccoons out there that are damaging people's property, but people are keeping those as pets, and people aren't asking city council to do something for it." The problem that we're presented with and the issue that we're presented with is cats, and when people are owing cats and keeping those pets, and then allowing them to intrude where they're not welcome. Far as having private people working as the agents of the city, again, I think Mr. Whalen's confused on that point. Simply, there's a requirement of the ordinance which is higher and that we very rarely require in other ordinances, which is that the owner of the pet be given notice before it becomes an offense by whoever's property the person is intruding on. And the person who owns the property can give the notice, but that doesn't make them an agent of the city. Or the person who owns the property can ask somebody else to give them the notice, such as the animal control officer or a police officer. But the objections that Mr. Whalen is raising simply aren't correct, and I think we ought to go ahead and support the ordinance.
Further discussion? Ms. Chenoweth?
I just wanted to reassure Mr. Whalen that I support some of the points that he said, and that my objection to continuing the conversation is that sometimes when an ordinance isn't ready, those who are most interested in having that ordinance passed can get together if an ordinance fails, and work on it and refine it, and come up with something. I'm not always sure that the committee of the whole is the right place to do that. So I support the sentiments and not the motion. I do think that one piece that I did not mention that really motivates the statement, this is not in the purview of government, is really that we have to decide what a cat is compared to other kinds of things, other kinds of nuisances. And I think that, you know, people who attract birds to their backyards, and the birds make a lot of noise that disrupt neighbors, that could be considered, travels over property lines. People who cut corners by traveling because it's the shortest path, and they go through people's properties and they cut the corner, they do that all the time because it's, it's the path of least resistance, and we don't really have a way of dealing with that. Owners need to put up fences. Leaves are actually a really good example of something that we also don't, don't have jurisdiction over. The leaves from my tree are my leaves, and my neighbor will bag all of his and her leaves off of the ground, and then my leaves will fall and blow into their yard, and so there's my property sitting in their yard. And I think of cats very much like smells, like leaves, like bird noises, et cetera, things that are in a different category. Rabid cats are not owned. They, they should be picked up, and they're usually strays, and we have a way of dealing with strays. And people have a choice whether or not to go barefoot or pick up the feces with the bare hands, and, and so I don't think that this is in the same category as dogs, which are very much, can be a danger. They can bite, and, and I, so putting them in the same kind of ordinance, it's not that I'm against an ordinance like this, but I just, I don't feel like this one cuts the cake. And I don't really see cats as controllable. And, well, one way to control cats is to kill them. And so if cats that are outdoor cats that will not live indoors, if they are a problem to their neighbors, then the neighbors either have to, owners either have to move or they have to kill the cats, and I just don't think that's a satisfactory solution.
Ms. Pat, I don't believe you've entered into debate yet.
Actually, I did.
What did you want?
Only once, and the rule says twice. I respectfully disagree with Ms. Chenoweth, and actually, I'm sorry, you're wrong on everyone, just about every one of those cases, examples you give. If someone's walking on your property and you don't like it, you just put a sign up on your property that says, "No trespassing." And they're breaking the law if they come on your property, you don't have to put up a fence. That's because we already have a law in the book about trespassing. It is true that if the wind blows your pile of leaves into someone else's yard, all they can do is gripe. If you pick up your pile of leaves and dump it into your next door neighbor's yard, that's against the law. And that's against the law in Urbana, we've got that on the books. And whether it's just picking up and dumping your next door neighbors, or driving across town and dumping it someplace else, dumping any solid waste in someone else's property is, means things. I think the last, the last remark Ms. Chenoweth made is really the essence of it, and that's really what this debate is about, is whether people believe that you just can't control cats. And that our neighbors have a right to own cats and then let them out, and if they want to, to relieve themselves on other people's property or dig up people's gardens, oh, well. And I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that if you, if you want to keep a cat, you can, you can keep anything you want in your house. If you're gonna keep something and let it out of your house, you have to be responsible for it. Putting up a "no trespass" sign won't work with a cat, because cats can't read, obviously. But their owners can. I also think that it's, whenever we talk about passing a law, one thing that's important to remember is that most people obey the law because it's the law. And we certainly have to look at enforcement, and is the enforcement mechanism practical? But the number one purpose for passing a law is to gain the compliance of the vast majority of people who are law-abiding. Six or seven years ago, I brought to council a pooper-scooper ordinance, because we did not have that law in Urbana, they didn't. Champaign, it was a complaint from one constituent who had a neighbor whose dog frequently chose her lot, which happened to be a big corner lot, to relieve itself on, or the owner chose, she chose, I mean, the dog chose, I don't know who made the choice, but that's where they went. And one day she came out and said to the man, "Your dog shouldn't be doing this on my lawn. I don't want you to do this." And he says, "I have every right to." And she called the city and said, "Isn't that against the law?" And the answer was, "No." Which means if he'd called the city, he would have found, said, "No, there's no law, give me one with your dog on other people's property." So we passed the law. And the same concerns are raised, now, well, how can you force, how do you know whose dog pooped? Well, I don't know how, I don't even know if we've written any tickets on it, but the change in passing that law was, the next time there's, there is a conflict between two citizens over whether or not the animal has the right to do whatever it might do on someone else's property, the answer is, "No, they don't. It's against the law." And that's really all this is doing, is this is just saying it's against the law for cat owners to allow their cats to invade other people's property, when the property owner whose property is being invaded says, "No, I don't want this." And I think that a property owner has the right to tell other members of the community, "No, you can't use my, my yard." For whatever it is you want, whether it's dumping your leaves, or, or your dog relieving itself, or your cat scaring away birds, or digging up plants, whatever, this is my yard. This is a property rights issue. That's fundamentally what this is about, is the right of every property owner to be free from intrusion on their property by, by their neighbors. And I don't, it's, this really isn't very, very far-reaching at all, not even, it's not even as severe as, as the law right next door in Champaign, but I think it will help in resolving conflicts between neighbors when there is a problem with someone's cat.
Further discussion? No further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
No.
Ms. who?
No.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
No.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with four eyes. Mr. Otto?
Resolution number 2003-12-026R, a resolution approving an extension agreement with Community Foundation of Champaign County, or in the part 2004. Will the committee have some move?
Second.
A motion of second. Is there any discussion, Ms. Chenoweth?
I just have a question. Last week, we didn't discuss what the status of it is, but can the mayor give us a sense of where things stand and what's the holdup? I know that's a question you didn't want to be asked this evening, but I'm curious, and certainly, and I am excited about finishing out this project, so wondering what the holdup is.
Aren't we all? I don't know if you've taken a look over there in recent months, but you probably know that Reflecting Pool was being constructed. The finishing touches are on the Reflecting Pool. It's ready for the installation of the fountain piece, which was here a while ago for some measuring work and so forth. That's, the fabrication has been completed on that. My understanding, it has not yet been delivered, and it's too late in the season to install it, even if it was delivered, so we're expecting installation of that piece sometime in the spring when the weather breaks, and it's more of a weather fountains. The larger piece, I haven't heard anything on for quite some time. But the idea is that when, I mean, I've been working with Public Works, so that when the fountain is delivered and installed, the park will have a finishing of the main piece, so it should be relatively, it's, it's been usable for a number of years, but it'll have a finished look with a reflecting pool, operational fountain, and have that area around the fountain and pool, you know, have a finished look as far as the site is concerned. So hopefully we'll see some, some, a finished product this spring as far as the fountain is concerned. Yes, Mr. Hayes?
You know, this is not the first time this has been extended.
You're right.
The previous couple of times that has been extended, they wanted us to extend our parkable. And so are they gonna complete it regardless of how long it takes, on the budget that they requested from the get-go, or are they gonna try to squeeze blood out of town?
Well, I think there are opportunities for donations to the project, whether it's for the larger piece, or for the sidewalk elements of the park. As you know, the original plan was where the concrete sidewalk base is right now. It was envisioned that a sidewalk would be over top of that. The artist changed the direction and focused a lot of those resources that were gonna be put to the sidewalk on the fountain Reflecting Pool area, and so that has taken the financial resources that had been slated for the sidewalk. So there are, but as I was saying in response to Ms. Chenoweth's question, the idea is, once the fountain is in and installed, the park will have a finished look, and that we can have upgrades to it with, you know, the finishing of the brick sidewalks and the larger piece to be, things that would have yet to be accomplished.
And the Community Foundation of Champaign will be responsible for donations?
Well, they are holding the money now that has been donated to the project to this date, minus the amount that's been allocated to the artist or distributed to the artist already.
Okay.
We got a motion of second on this? I guess we did. Any other discussion? Favorably, some of the saying, "Aye."
Aye.
opposed. That motion carries. Any reports of special committees tonight? Reports, officers?
Maybe just one matter. Due to the holidays, we will not have a committee meeting prior to the January 5th council meeting, which is on the books at present. At this point, I'm not sure it makes any sense to have that meeting unless something comes up in between. I really, tomorrow will decide what we have on the agenda, but I think we're looking at canceling the meeting on the 5th unless something came up, and then the next meeting that we would have would be the committee meeting on the 12th. What option would be to do committee and council on the 12th? Just do two meetings? If there's something that came up, yeah.
There will be a plan case from this Thursday. The plan commission meeting this Thursday, there'll be a plan case, so that, I don't know that we have to do that on the 5th, but, but having a council meeting on the 12th to handle that would probably be good.
Maybe if you'd like to handle that, that plan case on the 12th, that'd be fine, otherwise it'd be the, well, I guess the 20th. We can go ahead and schedule that plan case for the 12th if you'd like.
No, I think there's another item that wants to have council action on the 12th.
Maybe that's what we should do, is go ahead and plan a short council meeting on the 12th before the committee meeting. We could do those both on the same night, and then that way we'll have it for January off.
That would include township then, that we would cancel for the 5th?
We're right, we'd probably have to contact township and see if they'll do that for the 12th. Any other reports of officers? A new business, we've got a few items. First is an ordinance approving a preliminary and final plat. This is Sunny Estates subdivision, plan case number 1839-S-02. Ms. Tyler?
This is a preliminary and final subdivision plat. There'd be 28 lots in the 6.8 acre tract at East Washington Street. This is an infill parcel that's south of the Surrana Mobile Home Park and in between the two Scottswood subdivisions. You'll recall that this was annexed earlier last spring, and it's taken some time to complete the engineering plans and the storm order management plan for the site. There are two waivers requested. One is the, kind of a standard waiver in the street width for Sunny Lane, which is one road as part of the subdivision from 31 feet to 28 feet. And the second waiver request is for the power service connections to be above ground because the existing power lines in the older Scottswood subdivisions are above ground, so just be for the service lines. Plan commission discussed this at their last meeting and recommended unanimously for approval of the two plats. Any other questions?
Not a motion would be in order? We move.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. who?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven eyes. Next is a motion regarding council travel. Is there a request from Ms. who?
So she has a conflict of interest, I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Motion being?
Well, I move that city council allow a member, Alder Person who, to exceed the amount to which a member is otherwise entitled for travel for purposes of attending a smart growth training.
Second. And you have an amount?
I do not. Should we put in an amount?
500's fine.
500, okay. I'll, to, we, allow a member, Alder Person who, to exceed the amount to which a member is otherwise entitled for travel by $500 for purposes of attending smart growth training.
Second. Have a motion of second. Mr. Otto?
Yeah. I'd just like to say, I'm happy to support this. Smart growth is a great opportunity to create win-win situations in the city of Urbana between livable neighborhoods and also economic development, and Alder Person who has made a lot of valuable contributions pass in terms of providing advice and ideas and contributing to debate, and I expect that'll continue as a result of this training.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to ask Ms. who the question, if it's okay?
Sure.
Is that enough money? Does that have enough money?
Well, I can let you know probably next week, because I believe that Ms. Tyler's going to be making travel arrangements, I think she said tomorrow, so I may be able to give more information once she's able to secure reservations.
Okay, but right now, then, right now, we're just going to bolt down the 500 dollars right now?
I think it'll be more than that.
Yeah. Hayes will cover the shortfall. Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, just, you'll get extra copies for council members of all the materials?
I'll probably have one of my representative copies, what I learned while I was out there.
But for those of us who aren't able to attend your coffee, you'll provide those materials. Thank you.
Further discussion? There's no further discussion? All those in favor, please sign above the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Same.
That motion carries. Next, we have an appointment to the library board. It's my pleasure to submit you, the name of Kevin Maxson, 611 East Harding. He has been a resident of Urbana for over 25 years, received a bachelor's in English literature from the University of Illinois in 1981, has been working in technology for over 10 years in the community, and is currently a software consultant for Prairie City Computing. His term would expire June 30th, 2005. Fair motion?
Second.
For approval and a second? Any discussion? Ms. Chenoweth?
I move to defer this appointment so that I have asked Mr. Maxson some questions. I was not able to get in touch with him today.
A second.
A motion and a second, so we'll see this at our next council meeting, which I guess will be the 12th. Next, we have an ordinance further amending the downtown, Urbana Downtown Tax Increment Area Redevelopment Plan and related redevelopment for the Urbana Downtown Tax Increment Redevelopment Project area of the city of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, and related matters. Mr. Walden, you want to kick this off?
Sure. You have on your desk tonight an ordinance that was recently prepared. In its simplest terms, what this ordinance does is repeal the most recent amendment that we made to the Tiff District in April of this year. In April of this year, we clarified the termination date of the Tiff District to be December 31st, 2003. Prior to that was December 31st, 2004. And I apologize for the timing and the late nature of this. However, last week, as, late last week, as we were taking a look at the potential of what we might do in extending Tiff District Number Two, and in working with Ken Beth and trying to further understand the impacts on financing, of our financing in terms of the school aid formula, and how it impacts the school district, basically, I guess, we came to the, the finding that it's probably not in our interest to terminate early. Now, how, how did we get to a termination early? There was some discussion and confusion, I guess, regarding when the termination date would apply for Tiff District Number One. And what we did, as a matter of good faith, was attempt to terminate it early and honor, basically, an understanding that was made to do so. And that was the amendment that we made in April. So, again, in its simplest terms, what we're doing is repealing that and going back to the way we were before, because the impacts of the school aid formula on the school district are such that it's just in our community interest not to do it that way. So we are repealing it. We've made several amendments, you'll see, into this Tiff District over time. This district was adopted in 1980, when much of us were much younger, and the, there were several amendments to it. In 1986, we, we went to the sale on it, which allowed for a match of sales tax, and that was, that was a change that we made. Later on, in 94, we made a couple of changes. One was, we extended to 2013 the repayment of certain bond debt that we had. We advanced refunded it and restructured that financing, and that's the manner in which we've kind of extended Tiff 1 to 2013, even though the real estate tax increment portion of that's going to be terminated during 2004. And then we made the amendment to terminate, which was in 2002, which was a legislative clarification. We made the determination to terminate it in 2004, and then this last, this year, we made an amendment to that to terminate it early, 2003. So what we're doing is we're undoing the last amendment that we made to this, because of the reasons that I stated. So we have made a lot, had a lot of communication the last day or so with the school district and with the park district. Carol Baker from the school district is here. Also, our attorney, Ken Beth, who advises us in these matters, is here. I do have requests from the school district and to go back to the former date, because we hadn't anticipated the consequences of terminating it early. And I think that in the simplest terms is where we are. Now I can start with your questions.
Well, if there are no questions, a motion would be in order.
A move, we approve this?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Discussion, will the court please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven ayes. Next, we're going to have a closed session to review. Ms. Pat?
I move that the council go into closed session for the purpose of requiring closed session minutes.
A second.
Motion and a second.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Carries.